To the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
We have an amended agenda. We are taking off any of the public hearing information from Ben and the approval of the DOT budget amendment.
All the public hearings should have come out.
Just for me.
Yeah.
Yep.
When we published the budget amendment in the newspaper, it didn't accrue, I didn't send a notice out to any of the offices to let them know that we were doing this because this was a fast turnaround to get some of that conservation money in there. So, we can't add it to it because it already been published.
Gotcha.
So, will it be like next week or something like that?
No, we'll have to get it on another agenda. We had to set the date and time and then we got to do the ten day notice and then it's probably be two, three weeks out at least.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda, amended agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the period. Approve the amendments.
Well, hopefully that's less controversial.
(laughing).
Uh, let me just check one thing here. Um, yes. Uh, I make a motion to approve minutes as printed.
Second.
One thing on there that I've seen.
Okay, Dave, sorry, I changed one thing earlier.
Maybe it got changed. And I was absent and I seen something where I-
Yeah, I emailed Chris on that and said that-
I did too.
Oh, you did too?
So, that's what I, that's what I was checking.
She got bombarded.
Yeah.
That's got changed.
Yep.
Yeah, I took you out of the equation, Dave.
This is a copy I have. The I have still says answer.
No, that's correct.
Sorry?
But this was-
That one here had me listed.
It had you.
Chairman Lee, he wasn't here, so we figured we better not include Dave and immediately wasn't at.
Yeah.
So, that's what I checked, so that's why I think they are correct. Motion to approve.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close the period. General public concern. Don't see anybody beating down the door. That's good. All right. Public hearing, county budget amendment for fiscal year nineteen and twenty.
Okay, I think I have some copies for the first here. I do. Even more for Ben. The budget amendment this time only included a few items. You should have a copy in your package. The only things we amended under public safety and legal services, we increased that to include that additional full-time jailer that Dean was getting and the county's allocation to the law enforcement center because of the Motorola upgrade. There was a large hundred thousand dollar bill that we were told it needed to be paid in November, so we needed to increase our amount into the LEC. So, that's what's on public safety and legal services. On line twenty-one, county environment and education was then increased to cover the cost of the new counties built for conservation and I understand those are almost done or maybe they are done.
Walls are up. There's some cheating on the walls. Dresses are up, but they're not done yet. But the bills are starting to come in.
Of course.
I need a little money to pay them.
And then on line twenty-four, under administration, we increased that to include the water flushing of the courthouse and the new computers for several offices. All of these were budgeted for last fiscal year, but they weren't completed until this fiscal year, so we had to bring the money from last year back. So, those are the only things we amended at this time.
Need a motion to open a public hearing?
I will make the motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the period. We're in a public hearing. Discussion on the budget amendment. Further discussion on it.
But you all explained it?
Yeah.
And courthouse, you said that those issues with, when they were working on it, that was from last year, stuff that we'd been putting aside for repairs, maintenance?
We had, we had budgeted for it last year.
Right.
And then didn't spend it.
Didn't spend it because they couldn't get here.
Yeah. Too much rain.
Yeah.
Imagine that.
So, it was-
And they did get here, it was their next fiscal year. And they did a good job. They really made things look very nice and they did a few little extra things that they didn't even bill us for, so.
Oh, that was nice. That's always a plus.
Just to be clear, the money going into the conservation budget is the money we got from Midland Power and Corn Belt. You get that, it goes to the revenue side of the county budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, Peggy.
You're right.
So, in order to get that into my budget so that I can pay some of these bills, you have to go through this whole amendment process. So, just so you're clear, I'm not asking for additional.
Well, so, to your comment, which we talked about that way back when this whole building thing came up, that was a loan?
Yes.
That had to go through the county to get to the conservation. So, is, is all that money that-
Included in this budget, isn't it?
Right. Now, is, no, is it all that money that went, you know, passed through as a, I think maybe is the right word, the county? Was that all loaned money from, is that all loan that the conservation board took out for those buildings?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes. Fifty thousand for Midland and fifty thousand for Corn Belt.
Okay.
The total cost of the cabins is probably going to be a little bit more, but we will probably dip into some of the Oxbow money or just take it from a different account within our budget.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Uh, pretty much. All made sense that when you looked at it, looked through it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yep. That definitely answered my question.
I'll ask from the public.
I make a motion to close the public hearing then?
Second.
Go ahead, Peggy.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close the period. Approve resolution, resolution number twenty nineteen dash seventeen, adopting a budget amendment for fiscal year nineteen and twenty.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the period.
Now, we can talk with the guy that's got all the money.
(laughing).
Oh, I just, that was a good comment and I'm glad somebody's got their first strings tight. I did see some new paint up there, so I'm thinking that you might be paying something here.
Yeah, uh, that ended up being a cheap project. Sue really wanted that done and, uh, she volunteered basically her time and labor to do it.
It looks nice.
It cost us-
Oh, thank you.
Two, three hundred bucks for it, basically.
It is really nice. First of all, I hate painting.
It's been nice, so, yeah. She really wanted it done, so.
She did.
Two hundred bucks, a pretty easy thing to say yes to, but.
Yep.
Am I up?
We even had the microphone on itself. Here we go.
For the press, we have scratched the public hearing for Ben. It didn't get public. As such, we have, it looks like probably approval of the application of permit for snowmobiles, probably.
Yes, so, the only thing that I'll have today then is, uh, to approve the application for the snowmobiles. I met with them, uh, two, three weeks ago on a, I think it was on a Monday night, went to one of their regular meetings and sat and listened to them and, and what they would like to see happen and, uh, I guess I explained to them what our concerns were, but basically, um, we're going to allow them on a trial basis this year to groom the north and west ditch of C twenty from McKnight's Point, basically over to, uh, uh, Laverne. Um, the snowmobiles run that. Uh, there's a lot of times last year where the north ditch had snow in it and the south ditch did not, so the snowmobiles were still running on the north side, it just wasn't groomed for it and it wasn't signed for it, so, for the safety of the riders and everybody involved, it made sense to allow them to, to do that. Otherwise, the routes are all still the same, um, with the exception of allowing them. And I've talked to Tom on this. He basically said the same thing, he mirrored the same thing as me, allow it on a trial basis and the reason we quit allowing them on the north and west ditch is ten years ago or whatnot, they basically created a ridge right up next to the road on the north side, turned into a drifting issue for us out onto the road and created more work for us in the wintertime, but.
If it starts drifting for a snow way, it's-
It, it'll be discontinued. It will discontinue the north side.
Okay, and they're under the understanding of that?
Yes.
Without the real money, that-
The majority of your discussion-
Yes, I mean, that was their, majority of their ask was to be allowed on that stretch. Uh, the way they explained it is they, they do a lot of deadheading if it's just in one direction. I mean, they'll, they'll groom all the way from one sixty-nine over to Laverne without being able to turn and groom all the way back. They basically double groom the south side, so.
So, if it does start drifting, how do we discontinue that?
If it does start drifting, uh, we get ahold of Shane, the president, and basically explain our concerns to them and they can bring the machine back out.
Shane just walked in.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. No, you're fine.
That's fine.
Uh, so, I've given, uh, Tom, Shane's contact information and Shane and a couple of the operators have Tom's contact. If they run into an issue with drifting because of it, I mean, we'll, we'll take care of it when that happens.
Okay.
But otherwise, uh, whatever happened a long time ago was in the past and-
Right. Yep.
I'd like to be talking about they did a good job and spring is in the, just around the corner and we don't have to worry about the drifting.
Somebody said northwest Iowa's got a chance to snow Friday.
I know.
Tis the season.
I am not ready for it.
They know it's winter.
Yeah, the ground's warm enough, it'll melt right away anyway, but we don't need any more moisture.
No, we don't. Oh, my gosh.
Well, that guy deals with the snowmobiles.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're great to work with, so.
That's fair.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the application permit for the snowmobile trail moving within the county road right away.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all I got. So, uh, whenever we do have a, a budget amendment for everybody else, I'll get mine, I guess, published with everyone else and, and run it. Uh, mine is going to be the same as what Peggy had said. It's money that we obligated last year that didn't get spent last year for whatever reason. Uh, it's going to be close to a million and a half on mine. Six hundred and fifty in equipment, another five hundred in construction, you know, I mean, it's big numbers, but most everything's already obligated.
That never sound, isn't, sound as bad when it was just money from the past fiscal year?
Right.
And didn't get spent?
Right.
And it basically just needs to be moved per amendment because-
It, because it carried over.
There's no surprises.
Right.
From, there's not something like, wow, it's happening now, it just came out of nowhere.
Right.
Because the equipment we knew about, the construction we knew about.
Yes. So, it, I mean, if you looked at it like your, your personal checkbook, it'd be, okay, you're going to order a new combine, but it's not going to be available until October.
You have the money there.
You earmarked it last January.
Mm-hmm.
Buy that combine, it just didn't show up until-
Correct.
So, what are you, what are we doing for next year? I'm trying to remember, do you got anything in the future as far as equipment that we're updating?
Uh, so, in, in this current budget right now, I've got, uh, basically two trucks is my main purchase. Um, I, I can't remember exactly.
I do remember.
I would say like four hundred thousand's what I got set aside for new equipment in this fiscal year. And our maintainers that I ordered last fiscal year showed up on Friday. That's about six hundred.
I saw the kids out playing and-
They're excited.
Getting used to the-
The joysticks.
Well, they were, I was driving by and they were going by the, around the building and could tell they were doing their little, there's no steering wheel in it.
Oh.
Run by this little, like a skid steer type deal. I wanted to go back up there, but I'll just stay away for.
(laughing).
They look, they look nice and shiny.
I, I walked around them this morning and, uh, they're sharp. And I see I had a note on my desk that our loader backhoe should be here the middle of this week, so there's another hundred thousand.
And that means we'll get the one from Bode down?
And that means we'll get the one from Bode down here, so.
Good.
We should have three loader backhoes to be fixing tile and first act.
Be able to get a lot more.
Is there a permit? Loader backhoe at the Hardy Shop?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. They have a twenty sixteen John Deere three-ten S K.
So, if nothing else, we don't have to-
We don't have to swap equipment.
I, I know, I think that's a very good idea.
We still do swap equipment around just because we've only got one, uh, track excavator and a lot of the guys like to do the work from in the ditch instead of up on the road. Track excavators, kind of the piece of equipment everybody fights for right now.
But you solve one thing and, and it's-
But I-
Pile repairs and intake fixes and things that you can do with the backhoe.
Right.
Should speed that along so you don't spend a lot of time going to get one.
Yep.
That's a great idea.
Good.
That's all I have.
All right.
And I will put on next week's agenda the Saturday.
The Saturday, okay.
In the process.
All right.
So, you're here.
All right.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, move on down. Authorized chairman to sign twenty eighty, law enforcement contract with the city of Humble.
Okay, you have copies of this in your package. The city of Humble is going to, um, increase the amount of pay that they are giving to Dean Priver for the Dean Police Chief. Our only process in this is that, um, the city deposits, or sends a check up here and we deposit it to the LEC account, um, their fund, and then we write a check out monthly from that fund to Dean and that allows the city then to trust the law to their share of the money to put in there. Um, otherwise, they were having to give us the check, we were having to trust the money to the LEC, we pay it all in LEC, so this just made it, and so it's been this way for four, five years, three, four years.
A little cleaner and easier to do it this way.
Yeah, so it was time to give them a raise, so they all basically changes, an increase in pay. Um, so they had sent us a copy today last night.
And this is all looked over? I see Johns.
Yep.
Yeah, this is what Johns told me and he's all okay with it because I explained to him this is already in effect. Um, this is just a pass through of money. County is not giving him more money. This is a contract with the city, we're just passing the city money in.
I would make that motion for the chairman to sign the twenty eighty with Humble County and city of Humble Police Services.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close the period.
I think while we're on the law enforcement, I, we all got that text or email from, from Dean about us helping Webster County on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like to tell him thank you for their work sharing with Webster County so they could attend that funeral on Saturday of Pastor Henderson, so.
Yep. I sent back, uh, kind of a, it wasn't the thumbs up emoji, but it was a good job.
The more, the more we can share with other counties and work on our-
Just good PR.
Yeah, exactly.
We appreciate it.
Hopefully, we don't ever have to have be in that situation.
No.
Not that one.
Yeah.
I had a club of classes with that fella and he was very informative, calm.
Yeah.
He was giving great service and great talk.
Mm-hmm.
High guy.
He was a good guy.
Okay. We moving on that?
Yep.
That's good. Okay. Down to committee reports for quick.
Everybody's looking for the books, Danny, she's digging through it.
(laughing) I got a new cartoon, it's not easy.
What are you doing, you gonna have a training on, on that?
All right, well, so this past week, uh, no official meetings. Ready?
I had none, but I would tell you that today at, uh, uh, between that twelve, twelve-thirty range, the food pantry truck is coming in. If anybody's looking for physical activity, they always accept as many as they can get to help unload that, twelve to twelve-thirty out the secondary road.
Okay.
I don't be able to make that one.
I have a call in my sister's. I'm trying to pawn it off on her.
I should be able to do it today.
Okay. All right. Well, I had a crazy meeting last Thursday. I shouldn't say crazy, that isn't, it was action packed, let's put it that way. We had the, um, CEO training for Iowa Workforce Development. We're going from a region five, which has six counties, to a region, I don't know what our region, new region number is, but we're going to have twenty-four counties in it.
Yeah.
And, um, so I've got a good little booklet, it's four and a half hours of training. Um, we have to come up with, um, this, and another thing to put on, if you're all a little miffed on this, to read, is this is a, a federal law. We are the only state in the union that is not complying to this law. And if we don't get it, if we're not complied by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, we're going to lose eleven million dollars worth of funding for the tier one training throughout the whole state. But still, yeah, somebody really dropped the ball not making sure that we were in compliance. But anyway, so now we got to come up with a new twenty eighty agreement. We've got to come up with seventeen, there's a CEO board, plus there's going to be an Iowa Workforce Development Board just for that region, so we have to come up with seventeen people to be on that board. And since there's twenty, we're supposed to, we need to find people from every individual region that's coming into this. We got to find, a central location would be Storm Lake and some people will still be driving close to two hours to go to it, so.
It's not as bad as it could have been.
Right. Yeah.
Because I think, didn't the last, the last street go clear down by Council Bluffs?
Yeah, it was going to be, originally they went, they were going to do one region all in Des Moines, and then they were going to do three regions, and I think ours would have been Council Bluffs. And then now it's six regions.
Yeah, they was going to go by.
And we're the biggest one. We're the biggest one for CSS too. I just don't get it. (laughing). But anyway, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, so we're meeting again on the twenty-fourth, so we'll be meeting probably regularly until we get off, because we have to have this board in place by, I think, November. Is it November or is it January? There's so many, I, I've got the whole book, I got to get through it again, but there's so many deadlines and timelines that we, to make this work. And then the other thing is, Iowa Workforce had to get, I think the company's called Mayor and Mayor, to help present this to all the different ones they're working with, everybody is like, so here's all this extra money we just lost because we didn't get on it on board. I know, it's just, yeah, okay, I'm off my high horse.
And that meeting was, that meeting was where?
Um, Storm Lake. Storm Lake. That's all I have. Who is it?
Okay. I got to move on to a couple of weeks. Twenty-fourth, we had a BA meeting in Humble. And I was supposed to meet with the new director of Midas, but that didn't work out. I'll still have to meet with her sometime in the future. On the twenty-fifth, we had an EMA meeting in Humble. We accepted the resignation, if I remember. That's all I have. Done that. Okay, anything else we need to discuss?
Open all the dates for you guys.
City coming up for this work session then? Are you on the, you're the person that-
(laughing).
Um, we got cookies, so we can be entertaining.
Okay, there's one other thing that, you, you got anything else, of course, Peggy?
No.
Okay, I talked to Dean or I got a text from Dean. He must've been out chasing dogs again this weekend.
Oh.
And he's perturbed, uh, his comment was that we've got to do something. So, do we want to put an ad out there to hire another dog person or what do we do with it?
I thought we were going to do some-
Put that person from Bode as interest.
Somebody was going to-
I visited with him.
Oh.
I visited with him and we had an LEC discussional meeting today because we didn't have a quorum.
Mm.
So, we also brought that up and Dean was there and same thing that you got on the text, just need to do probably something animal control, person wise. And Peggy is going to check, I mean, we've got the old contract and then you said something about the new one that's not in place at this point. Or is-
Definitely.
How are you?
And look at that, I mean, and very much, this is a person without disclosing a whole lot, uh, was interested, but we need a little more information to move forward.
Well, we'd still have to go through the idea of putting advertising to-
Probably let go.
Do we want to put that on the-
We have to put it in the paper, advertise, open.
Well, I'm wondering if the county has a role in that, does that person get hired by the animal board?
Well, that's what we was trying to figure out, but.
I mean, the county would not be-
Right, all right.
Putting ads in there.
That's why I'm-
So, then they would.
Now that they have this board, I think that's the role.
That's what we was trying to do, but Dean's kind of pushing it to get somebody done.
This was-
We're trying to get the dog house scrapped.
We didn't.
We do anything and he's pushing, he wants out of the dog catching business, so.
Right.
And he's, they should. I mean, if we're paying them to be out patrolling, serving papers or whatever, they don't have time to go chase a dog or a cat around the alley.
Right.
Will there be a meeting on the twenty-fourth?
Well, I think we got one this month, sometime.
We just did Denver.
We got another one on the twenty-fourth of this month.
If you got any, to get Peggy.
Yeah, just the one.
Take care of them.
The twenty-fourth of this month, we got a meeting coming up on the dogs, so we, maybe we get by another month and then see what they're going to do with that one and from there we can go. From there, maybe we'll have to hire somebody temporarily or something.
They'll have to make sure and get it on to the town government and they can take action, but, and maybe they would consider a special meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, we can try.
And they need to pick a woman.
I'll see if I can't get something this week. See where they're at, see if we can get a special dog meeting going. I don't know, it's over. Okay, anybody got anything else? Rick, do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
(laughing) Well, the only I had to put on is sort of my committee reports, we didn't have any committees, but I met with Eric and Ben out to secondary road.
That's right, I didn't write that on my board.
On Tuesday morning, Tuesday afternoon.
Yes, Rick, yeah, right after lunch on Tuesday, before Rick was going to be gone, Rick and I and Ben visited about tile crossing.
Yeah, on the pavement.
Yep. We did do that. This is just information, so I don't, this is drainage information, but I don't know if we're going to drain for this, but I was asked to do some research on District 33 Old Main tile. Is it fair to just give you the information? I don't know the protocol on, does it...
Yeah, you can do it.
I mean, if we're not going to do anything about it...
No, you can share information.
Give us, where's 33?
33 is northeast of town here.
Yeah.
Through the...
North, oh.
That ditch area out there.
Yeah, it's a big district, there's some branches.
Yeah, there's D and E and...
A.
A, B, and C, probably.
Probably.
Yep.
Well, anyway, that's very true, though. Don't know how far down the alphabet it goes, but at any rate, one of those branches, there is a new tile that was put in place several years ago, it's just a long time, it's great. A portion of the Old Main was left intact, it is working just fine, but somewhere in the past month or two, I've requested to check into that with the landowners, because there's been, there's, there are some repairs on the Old Main, and there has been. It is nothing egregious, and there is a lot of lateral tiles hooked into that, and of course, the Old Main is hooked into the New Main, and all things considered, it has been working just fine according to the landowners up in that, you know, where that is in their property. So there's really not a reason to further think that closing that at this point. Somehow or another, that came up, I mean, I had a note on it, and so over the last couple of weeks, I checked with the landowners, and, you know, as far as how much is it to fix, not all that much, it's fine to leave it, it's working fine, ladders are hooked to it, it's, the system is just fine as it is. But in, having said that, and not to just pick on District 33 branch, A, B, or C, we have a lot of that, but so it's a fair question, you know, once a new system's in place, if they leave the old one, does there come a point in time, I think that was the discussion, that the old one just needs to be abandoned because all you do is fix it.
Yeah.
And this is not the case on this one in particular at this point in time. So we'll certainly keep an eye on it, and that's what I expressed to the landowners, they understand that, but as of right now, it hasn't been egregious on the amount of repair, so that's my report on that.
Dial Erickson sent me a text and said that they are out here at, the number is 6280, and hoping to get to the 10,745, and their goal is to be done in three weeks.
Oh, so they're there digging.
They are there digging, finally, and he just said they got it uncovered, and of course, then the monsoon started. So that's...
Can't catch a break with that one, can we?
No, it's a mess.
Okay, anything else for the board?
I like the motion to adjourn now.
Rick's motion?
Any discussion, all in favor?